Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the meeting. If everybody would please rise, we're gonna do the prayer and bless the ladies.
Everybody would please bow with us. Heavenly Father, Lord, we gather here today in your presence be filled in this room. We ask you to bless our minds, Lord Father, that when we get to lead, Lord Father, we're leading your people. We know that, we understand that, we know that we have consequences for our decisions that we make. And we know that there's a lot of people here, but we're asking for peace and understanding to come over this court today, Lord Father. We're asking for everybody to get into one mind and one accord. We're asking your Spirit to be present with us today as we make these decisions. We focus on you, Lord Father. Please bless us as we go forward. We ask you to be with our leaders here today and the ones that's came. This heat that we've had, just keep us safe from that. We ask you to issue your heavenly sweet name. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody be seated. Darlin Park is gonna be officiating the meeting and the hearing.
Alright folks, this is the, this part right here is gonna be the public hearing part of it. And we're gonna give, everybody that we can in time to speak, have any questions about the budget. There'll be an opportunity for y'all to do that. What I'd like for you all to do is that, that who has the question, come to the podium, tell them which district you're from, what part of the county you're from. And then you'll be able to, go ahead and ask your question or whatever you have to say. And we're gonna allow you two to three minutes to say what you need to say. So we give time for everybody to speak that needs to speak. Once we're done with the public hearing, we'll move right into the business meeting. So anybody that wants to go first, raise your hand. Alright, Ms. Lois, you're the person since you, we're gonna do it now.
First of all, I'm gonna ask every commissioner to vote no on this land tax race. Because they raised them last year, the state did, this is what I've been told. And they're gonna reassess them next year, and they're gonna go up again. And I don't agree with this three dollar across the board raise. I don't mean anything toward anybody, except I think the ambulance service and the sheriff department should get more. Because I seen a lot of county workers are sitting under a shade tree doing nothing. And they don't need a dollar to do that. And these people's lives are in danger every day. They put their life on the line, and I'll give them back. The ambulance and the sheriff.
What is your name?
Lois Almonroe.
Almonroe. Is that all you have, Lois?
That's all I'm saying.
Good, thank you. Alright, next, come on up. State your name, which part of the county you're from.
Oh, I'm from Richmond, I'm forgotten.
That's okay, well.
I'm from Richmond, my name's Kathy Sneak. And I'm like her, I'm asking all the commissioners to vote no on this. My land taxes doubled last year. So those people in this county that can't afford it, oh yes. What about the elderly? I mean, we've got a little bit, look at all the people in this county, this is, this is a poor county. And I just don't think it's right. I'm like Lois, I think the sheriff's department, county workers, they put their life on the line every day. And I don't think that the residents should get the three dollar raise. I think it makes the government and the animal rights. And this paying off of the debt of that man at the table, I don't think that should be put up on the paper here and held within county. It's just the price. I mean, if you kill somebody, you should be held accountable for that, in my opinion. Because mayor, you wanna go out here and kill somebody, we be held accountable, that's right.
Amen.
So, I just, I just don't agree with this. Thank you all.
Alright, we're gonna have to come on up.
Roy Deffler, Almonroe. Good. Some of the things I was gonna say, some people have already said. I don't know what the situation was with the death at the jail, but I don't think that should be put on all the people of Overton County. We didn't do anything, whoever's responsible, we take responsibility. If that's settled already, the county needs to handle it without taxing the people. That's a ridiculous situation. Second thing I've heard is for inflation, well inflation doesn't go up thirty-five percent. So I could see five percent or something like that for inflation, that's ridiculous. What's that? And the third one is the three dollar an hour raise. Could you imagine if you got a job at McDonald's and they said you got a three dollar an hour raise? You thought you died and went to heaven. I think that's a lot of a raise, it's a big raise. And listen, I work with a lot of people in the county, and everybody's great, you know, they, they do their job, the people I see, and they're conscientious. But I know in every business, there's some dead weight. And I think before you give raises, you need to go through an audit, somebody independently audited to see, are the three people leaning on the shovel and one person's shovel? And if there are people that need to go... If there are people that need to go, let them go, and then give their praises to the other people that get a raise. And keep good people getting a raise, especially law enforcement and whatnot, that take care of us. So I'm definitely against this size of an increase, it's ridiculous. In fact, it's criminal. It's actually criminal to do property taxes, because we already bought it, but anyway.
I am ashamed though of our roads, but I don't think this big of a tax thing is necessary. Somebody needs to be accountable for all of our money that's been spent in this town. Just in raising taxes, which is gonna put all the small businesses out of business. So you know what that means? We will be high telling it to cook for the shirt shop, people will be losing their sour tax. Then we'll be back up here again. Debbie Allen.
A nursing home.
Yeah, and they say it's a raise for all the way across the board. I worked at the nursing home, my check was an Oakton County check. If you're gonna give one a raise, they all the way across the board, I can say it. As far as the sheriff's office, the ambulance people go, I agree one hundred percent. I would care to give them a five dollar raise, but it already be the sheriff and the ambulance workers, not everybody. I just wanna sit behind the desk, doing nothing.
Thank you, sir. My name is Scott Deffrich, I live close to Nevinon Church on 111, which I think puts me in Richmond, but I'm confused because I got the crazy cookbook address. I understand it takes money to run a government. The state of Missouri sends you an retirement check every month, which I appreciate. I know you need the money, I'm gonna tell you a way that I know that our county, that is very fun with law enforcement and these other things, that I think is much better. Look at a quarter, or a tenth, or an eighth of a percent sales tax. Don't put it on all of us that live in this county. Let everybody that comes here and goes to the lake and spends a dollar, give you part of that money.
Sales tax, we tried it a year ago when the ballot, and it was voted against, so we've tried that once.
I'm just telling you, there's alternatives. And based on this crowd, I'm telling you, everybody in here would vote for an eighth of a percent sales tax over a thirty-five percent real estate tax. Landowners paying this, anybody in this room that rents, if this goes through, get ready for your rent to go up. Because your landlords ain't gonna accept it on their lawn. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time and your attention.
I'm sorry folks, it's the audit here, but they're doing everything they can to prove it off. Go ahead and speak your name.
My name's Elliot Bowman, I believe I live in District One.
Elliot Bowman?
Yes, sir. I'm a young fella, I don't know a lot of things, but I do know that property is bought and sold in Overton County every day, and taxes is paid on it. I don't understand why people pay taxes every year on something that they already own. So deciding about an increase on a tax that shouldn't be in there in the first place, in my opinion, is the wrong way to go about this, because it shouldn't exist anyways. Second thing, and I'll try to be short, I was raised that if you can't afford something, you don't buy it. If you want to afford something that you can't afford, you find other income, or you do without somewhere else. And that's what I propose here, I recommend voting no on this, thank you.
Hey, everyone, my name's Robert King, my family and I just moved here to Livingston last year. We live out in the water, poor roads and everything, and, you know, I'm a disabled veteran. I already spend every single bit of my disability check going towards home payments and everything else. I ain't got any more to give. I have to go out and hustle two to three different jobs, right now, just to make ends meet. And I've got a wife who has cancer, and is on the verge of losing her damn eyesight, excuse my language. That's why I said excuse. But, you know, we can do better. This thirty-five percent increase, just the property alone? Why? I get we need money, I mean, I get that, but take it from the stuff that doesn't need, instead of from the people that do. There's no reason any of us good people should be charged when others are getting increases. Look at the people who already have enough. That's all I got.
Hello, I'm Danny Wayne Sterling, I live towards Alpine, outside Pecito out here, back to my village. Folks, I'm gonna tell you something, I've lived in my residence for twenty-one years, and I, I'm speaking, I don't think you guys don't need a raise. My road has not been paved over twenty-one years, and I try to get my road paved, paved with services. Why do I need to pay land taxes that my house is paid for? I paid my house off in eight years flat, and everything I own. Folks, I'm gonna tell you something, I work at Purdue Farms, I've been there for about fifteen years, I make nearly eighteen, almost eighteen dollars an hour. And I'm gonna tell you something, this is disgrace, I don't like it, and I know you people don't like it either. And I'm gonna tell you something, and I'm gonna say this, if you, if you vote for this, we can vote you in, but we can vote you out. Now, folks, come on down, I would cost four years. I mean, my sixteen-year-old, I mean, he's pretty damn, he's pretty smart, and you know, he can outsmart me. And he says daddy, we don't need this land, Chris, you pay enough. I said, son, I know it. What they need to do, the people who's got their homes and everything paid for, do not have to pay property tax. And the one who does have land property packed, but if this go up about two, three, four percent, don't go up thirty-five percent. I'm gonna tell you something, if you do, I guarantee you, these people here in Overton County, you're gonna, you're gonna lose it, folks. I promise you that, trust me, I'm pretty smart, I know. That's all I got to say, good evening, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna say something.
You're one, stand up right there.
I don't know why you can't raise the sales tax and maybe add on to the wheel tax. Because if you don't, you're not gonna get everybody in this county. You've got these deadheads laying around here spunting up at everybody, but yet they buy drinks, they buy food, and they buy clothes. So they need to be put in this thing, not all the landowners. Because we've carried them long enough. That, that, I mean, it's, it's not even reasonable.
Gerald Wendell raised his hand.
Talk about sheriff's department, handling, I'm not fine with that. Another subject, you're gonna put a lot of senior citizens in harm's way. I mean, they're not gonna be able to afford this. So, start foreclosing properties on them? I don't know, I mean, I'm seventy-three years old, I work part-time. I don't think we need a thirty-five percent tax. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? The windows being open to a decent peak, the blue are not gonna die.
The windows won't open up, they're sealed.
My name's Gerald Wendell, I'm a lifelong resident of Oakton County. Most people here work hard, we're not the richest county, and we're not the beat comparable group. And I think our county executive does that, which I think is wrong. We don't have the revenue pool, or the meaning, and I don't think it's right, just catch the landowners or people that got the property. People all the way across the board, where it's evil, thirty-five percent is skewed. Well, it is, it's not ridiculous, it's skewed. And I'm gonna tell you, whoever probably does, they may be put out of office. Get ready, if it's coming, you're out.
Yes. Come on up, sir.
My name is Michael Trainer, I live here in Livingston, I've been living here about two years now. And I have, I still have a lot to learn about the, about the city and the county. Couple of things that I haven't been able to figure out yet. Is that we have a small county, but we have, like we have Livingston Police, we have Sheriff's Department. Now, these are all services that are necessary, we need policing, we need fire, we need ambulance services. But it seems to me that these kind of services for a county of, you know, about twenty-two thousand people, should be consolidated. I hear we need something about a new health department. Aren't there, aren't there any, aren't there any buildings that could be rehabilitated for the purpose? All the services for a county this size should be maximized, we need to consolidate, put things into one area, so that, so that every penny that's spent could be used in the most, the wisest possible manner. I think that the budget should be audited and, and checked for any, any waste. And I also agree that the, that the people who are the property owners, although maybe, maybe they, having a little bit more than some of the others, should pay a bit more, that we shouldn't have to pay for everything. That the entire group should have to pay a fair share for the services that they receive. And that's all I can say, and I thank you for your attention.
Hi, folks, I didn't care to move, I was out pretty much here in Overton County my whole life, six years. Now I've come up here to one of those five, we're running property taxes thirty-five percent. Somebody tell me that. What's the deal? Is it because someone got killed? So, I mean, start forefiling properties on them? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm seventy-three years old. I work part-time. I don't think we need a thirty-five percent tax. Thank you.
Hey, can I ask a question? I've not authorized this. Can windows be opened to a distance?
The windows won't open up.
My name's Gerald Wendell. I'm a lifelong resident of Overton County. Most people here work hard. Heck, we're not the richest county, and we're not the beat comparable group. And I think our county executive does that, which I think is wrong. We don't have the revenue pool, the capital, or the means. And I'll point you right, just catch the landowners or people who've got properties. People always cross the board for it's evil. Thirty-five percent is skewed. Well, it is unpredictable. It's skewed. And I'm gonna tell you, whoever probably does, they may be put out office. Get ready. It's coming. You're out.
My name is Michael Trainer. I live here in Livingston. I've been living here about two years now. And I have, I still have a lot to learn about the, about the city and the county. Couple of things that I haven't been able to figure out yet is that we have a small county. But we have, like, we have Livingston Police. We have Sheriff's Department. Now, these are all services that are necessary. We need policing. We need fire. We need ambulance services. But it seems to me that these kind of services for a county of, you know, about twenty-two thousand people should be consolidated. I hear we need something about a new health department. Aren't there, aren't there any, aren't there any buildings that could be rehabilitated for the purpose? All the services for a county this size should be maximized. We need to consolidate, put things into one area so that, so that every penny that's spent could be used in the most, the wisest possible manner. I think that the budget should be audited and, and checked for any, any waste. And I also agree that, that the people who are the property owners, although maybe, maybe they having a little bit more than some of the others should pay a bit more, that we shouldn't have to pay for everything. That the entire group should have to pay a fair share for the services that they receive. And that's all I can say. And I thank you for your attention.
Hi, folks. I didn't care to move. I was out pretty much here in Overton County my whole life, six, seven years. Now I've come up here to One Oh Five, we're raising property taxes thirty-five percent. Somebody tell me that. What's the deal? Is it because someone got killed in Overton County jail? Because the law wasn't there job to take them to within there? Seems to me like somebody needs to be known to train. If you're going to have a job in the, in the apartment like that, you need to go to school and be trained on how to handle yourself. And if you don't make, you don't make no difference. At my job, I'm trained to do my job. I not have to see over maybe sometimes as much as a hundred million. But I'm, I'm that person in charge. And I ain't talking about a five-million-dollar job. I'm talking about sometimes a one-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar job, just in my apartment. Now, thirty-five cent property tax increase, a lot of people can't afford that. Their farms and stuff is all they got. Their homes is what they got. And all people says, well, rent. I don't do nothing but rent. What's gonna happen to the people who has to raise the property taxes on renting? The rent's gonna go up too. Who's gonna subsidize that? Me? For thirty-seven years, I worked for the same company. I got two hundred miles a day to work. Because there's no job, and nobody's telling you that'll pay me what I make. Where's the job at? Why don't we have better jobs here in Overton County? As far as paying paper, what does the sheriff make a year? Makes a hundred thousand a year. County mayor, what's he make a year? Now, all the people here want to know one thing. The county, did they thank each county job the people got? Sheriff, mayor, something like that, don't pay much. They paid a lot of money. The employees made up their daily money. The people that drive the ambulances over, they don't make much money. But everybody's expecting people to come get them when they have a car wreck or they're laying there with a stroke, something like that. Yes, they need to be cut Europe. I agree with that. But at some point in time, you can't come in here and tell us if you're gonna raise thirty-five percent on the farm. Right now, people are coming in from California. They're giving sixty-five hundred to fifteen thousand dollars for acre ground. Not worth it. Well, my farm's sitting right beside that. It's gonna jerk my price, my land, too. So therefore, I have to pay the same property tax. That's not right. I mean, this year, this year's a lot, this year's a lot to go into there. Don't know what you'd do if you had five hundred acres, you had to pay taxes on them.
I don't, I don't know if I could vote that.
You'd have to sell them. You'd have to sell them. I mean, is that what they, is that what they want, to live here in Overton County, settle things, guys? And go over there, let them have the price? Because it costs me about seventy dollars a day to get it, to drive the knife on back home. They tell me that certain proceeds they get when you spend here in Overton County, we buy our fuel here for the county road stuff. Go down Camp Brown Road there. Someone is putting a mark in the road. The trees and stuff is laying out in the road. The, the side of the road, that dim-bell of the bush house. Look at it. This is how our county money's being spent? Now, people, if you ain't got the money, the paper, you ain't taking stuff. They gonna take the farms and what you got, and the home we finished got. And people who own big incomes, most people around here who's older now, I'm talking about seventy-five, eighty-year-old, they never, they have never made a job. Probably made it over ten million dollars. Yeah, let me tell you something. My neighbor has solar power hooked up, the batteries and stuff rigged up from the junkyard here. Okay? He pumping water across the road down through there in the hole he's in, to break his water up. He lives in a house in Oaxaca. He dug water lines in the hole in the yard for some kind of geothermal pump system. He's, he's eighty-year-old and his wife out there setting dust and hardwoods. So they can have, book the wood that he perhaps do. He's got a dryer hooked up, a turn on a battery, and the heat blows off the wood stove to dry his clothes. Now, this is how kind of people live near an Overton County. So I'm telling you, thirty-five percent pay raise, gun out of the ditch. But I also know you've got to train, and you can hire someone off the street, eighteen, nineteen-year-old, put a gun on his hand and say, Here, boy, we're gonna be a CO officer. And you take them back in there and put them in the boys. They're not in jail because it's still candy. Hell, they're in jail because they're doing stuff that they need to be put in jail for. And you either need to be big enough, you either need to be big enough to take it and handle yourself in there, or have enough in there to take you. Am I right?
Oh, you're right. You're definitely right.
I mean, I know sheriffs, I don't think turn the mood. If you ever pack a gun, no. That I don't think, I mean, I don't see most of the people around here do what they do today. And you know, I understand that someone got killed up here in jail. Is that right?
Not exactly.
Well, anyway, how much money did it cost the people in Overton County?
The county settled for a payment over time of, I think, one point three million.
One point three million dollars right there?
Three point five million. Three point five. The insurance tape too.
Insurance, but the county is out here.
So that mean if the people, if they can't, the people you're saying. Like I say, two hundred miles, knife, knife on the back. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm not, I'm not, I've been, how many times I've been in your office? And you have, I bet you have read, seen me walk through that door. That's all I got to say, folks.
We'll get you two. Come on up. Just wait. He on his. Jason Cass.
Down the corner, how do you free kill a tire? I own like forty-two hundred acres. And I created, you know, come out in the TV part, and there are people coming in like fifteen, fifteen, every place, ten minutes. Now, the sales tax, I can understand that stuff has to work. But my land tax, Lord have mercy, I mean, that's like drinking magic, but I'm not paying it. And then I'll tell you, I've got like fifteen beds that I pay will tax. I mean, that was hope been used for so long, it didn't stop. I don't remember when it started. I've been here forever. But I, forty, and then my kids, I homeless. So they didn't get every bit of my money, or for the footback, but I ain't getting nothing out of it. I ain't complaining. I'm just saying, those are the Lord's spend money wisely. Then, like, a lot of these offices up here, you know, they get two personal days paid every month. And if they don't use them, they can mail them. Now, my employees don't get that. And I know some young guy employees, because they don't do yours, employ the same benefits. Because our, you know, the bucking on the county here, you know, yours is employed, you know. But I would never vote for something that I would not give for mine. I just think we need to, and then like the stadium, all that money, I know it's fifty years old. But that means they've had fifty years to pay for the commission, all your concessions and all of that. The people coming in here, if it ain't worth it, if it ain't gonna pay for itself for fifty years, we don't need it. We gotta cut the speed.
What's your name?
My name is Michael Kirkpatrick from Allen's. I'm a retired federal law enforcement officer on all four increases for a law enforcement meeting and EMS and what have you. But thirty-five percent is confiscatory. This is not New York. This is not California. Forefathers had a tea party. Ladies and gentlemen, this is where the tea party.
Y'all welcome to stay. And I would again apologize to the. What people? We at least there, and then we actually move into the meeting.
Everybody's up here talking. My name's Betty Landy. I live in Richmond. I don't know which part of Sweden is Richmond. My dry hall is over by the. I just wanna know, is this about what happened at the police department? Y'all are all scooping around it, and nobody will tell us. Do we got to pay the one point three million? I can't afford no more. I own a truck and come here. You know the taxes I pay. And I'm gonna pay for this? If this is the police department's fault, then maybe you get cut. No, if this done, then I get made. Then they need to get brain, you have to do it for middle-aged people, or the middle-aged. You know, but I wanna know, is it about the one point three million dollars? Do you know, Karen? Because why is it our fault to pay it? That's their fault. That's their fault. They should be paying them. Huh? I just wanted to know, you know, I just don't think it's right. A lot of people can't afford it. I've lived here ten years. And all I've seen is all the stuff that the city went through, about that money, I got told to shut up five hundred times. But now I just wanna know about this one point three million. I don't think it's there. That's it.
That's your name and where you from, please.
My name's Martha Selby. I'm from Carney Chapel.
Martha Selby. Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, okay. My question is, why does the landowners have to be punished? And why is it coming from just us? Why not a sales tax?
Um, I'm Alex, this is, and I have a couple of questions, actually. Um, as far as a will tax stipend goes, I've been researching that one, and we built that house though in nineteen seventy-six. And that's been forty-eight years. And you tell me we ain't paid off four million dollars? I think about, but that's an open loan. We can add it to it. So we'll never get it paid off. So why are we doing this? This is, this is the secret. You know that, right? The public don't know about this. Now, how do you manage to live with yourselves if you go along with this because you're just as guilty as he is? Not in your meeting, he plainly said that it don't matter what these people say, you know what you better vote. Now, what does that say? That's wrong. That's wrong on everyone of you on this party. You said it's on camera. I went back and watched it twice. For the record, you said before you got married, you cared about these people. You wanted to know what they thought. I don't know what you sold out for. These people are not looking.
And a hundred thousand a year.
This lawsuit, I obeyed the laws. I pay my taxes. I do everything right that I'm supposed to do, according to my Lord. But I will not plant a seed in corruption when you're over there killing people. You committed that murder. You absolutely did. And you think I wanna give them people that sat on top of that man three more dollars? Absolutely not. And by the way, that wasn't the first one. Because the first one, I had to go to Nashville to pick up the body to bring it back to give to the mom that died in that jail. So absolutely not. That's wrong. This whole town is corrupt, and it's time for these people to know it.
My name is Colleen Tuck. I'm in the fifth district. And I don't know how I could talk what's been said. I do have a couple of additional requests for the commissioners. When you speak in a public meeting, please speak up so that when these recordings come forward and go on the internet, there's no question about your motive, because it looks a little suspicious. And I know, I know many of you. I know you have your loud voice. Some of you don't. But please speak up so we can hear what you're saying. Is there an opportunity or not to go back and revisit this budget? Yes or no?
Yes.
Is there?
Only at one time.
One time?
Only one.
Okay. That is my recommendation, based on what I heard, is you guys go back and revisit the budget. The last thing I wanna say is, whoever voted to have these commissions in this courthouse, which is historical and beautiful, knowing we have a brand-new building down here, it's a shame.
I'll thank you all for your, your thoughts on it, and we appreciate you all.
I think that you paid your account.
Commissioner, I just got one more question. Whose idea was this anyway? Was it yours?
Hello, I'm Abigail Shelby. I'm from Allen's. I'm from Allen's. I had some questions about the health department, and how much of money will be going for the proposed health department? How much is going for the land? I have the last page of the budget here. There's some numbers on it, but I was still, I just had questions.
The nurses for the health department, there's a grant for six million dollars from the state of Tennessee, which is federal money, that's been handed to Overton County. We're building a new health form. We could have done a remodel over there at the other place, but it was recommended by the health department, folks, that we do a rebuild, because the building is forty years old. Built from nineteen eighty-four. So what was done is that this money, they've been wanting this built for the last four or five years. This, this, we've been waiting on the state to turn the money in for four, five, six years. And so they finally got to Overton County, because I think they've been doing this all across the state with the federal money. So what money that we had to match with it came from COVID money, that we had from the COVID time. That money can only be used for help, things that health nature was for. So they, we saved that money, could use that money for a match for this six million dollars. Now, the state didn't want us to turn down this six million dollars to get a brand-new building for free. So that's the reason why the health departments came up, because it's a federal grant through the state of Tennessee. And, and that, it's for Overton County, and this is a one-time deal. If we don't build the health department now, we won't get any health department for several years to come. So that's the reason why the health department became an issue.
Does that include the land?
Pardon?
Does that include the land?
That includes five and a half acres of land, is what it includes.
Where's the other million? This says five, five million.
Pardon?
Where's the other million? This paper that I got from them says five million.
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying that we talked about six million dollars. That was some addition, I think we got some additional money on top of that five million, is what happened. They had some money left over from some other health departments they were building. So they, I think they split between us and three other counties, is what they done. So we wound up having six million dollars. But it didn't increase our match. Our match was the same, the COVID money, that didn't come out of taxpayer's money whatsoever, other than what was sent down from Washington when they had the COVID. And of course, that's probably, that's taxpayer's money too, to the federal government. But, but no love was actually. For that five, five acres and the health.
Okay. And I, I have a lot of respect for first responders, but I, a lot of, I don't, through town, you'll see there's posters up, there's chanting for auctions, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's farms and houses that are being sold because the property owners weren't able to pay their taxes. And that is, I mean, today, there's signs up. You can, they go on worldwide web, anybody in the world can get those farms. And they're gone from, I mean, they're out of Overton County forever. And I know it's hard on farmers. Farmers life is hard. And it's just, to me, it's only size of the heat. Um, and I know it's hard on farmers. Farmers life is hard. Um, and it's just, to me, it's only size of the heat. And, um, I just would like to see Overton County stay as close to where it's been for a long time. Thank you.
I just want to ask one question. If you already have the money for the health department in that land, that other land that y'all are willing to purchase for four hundred thousand hoping something will come in. When you go to the grocery store, do you gather up your groceries and push them up there and hope something will come in that'll pay for your groceries? Do you hope it don't come in for me?
My name is Michael Sales. How y'all doing?
Michael Sales?
Yes, sir. My question is, where's the representation for the people raising the taxes on the landowners? Who's representing the people in this matter? Because you're talking about federal grants. But when you're dealing with the federal government and you're abusing disabled people that are federally protected by the American Disability Act. And the county's involved. You're messing with federal government grants and your ability to get them. And you're turning the taxpayers' money on it when it's not the taxpayer's fault, sir. Um, the government's involved. You can't be much about it, but it's not the people's fault. They deserve representation. They need a lawyer.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Vader. I'm from Richmond.
Lori.
Uh, and I just have a question. What I don't understand, I've been here ten years. Love this community. Love the people. But over those, since I've been here in ten years, the amount of new homes that's been built in my subdivision, I want at least ten. That's, that's revenue. That's more people that are taxed that you didn't have before. So how many new homes have been built in this county alone? That people pay tax to pay taxes. Two things you can't avoid, death and taxes. So where's all the money for all these homes that's been built? They haven't paid tax just like everybody else. So why are you, why is there such an increase in the thirty five percent? I don't understand that. And not only that, it's pretty pathetic where I'm sitting here. There's a piece of board on the floor that you can tell that it's sitting there for who knows how long because it's soaked in wet. You don't have no way to pick that up? It's a bunch of that bad.
Come up, please. What's, your name is?
Bob McMichael Holtz.
Wrong.
You had a EMS director?
Yes, we did.
And nine one one director?
Yes, we did.
Is that the same person?
Yep.
Pardon?
Is that the same person?
Well, now he's, right now he's just an interim, but Mr. Barlow connects.
Is he getting paid two salaries?
He is not, or nine one one is not a county position.
I know, but it's.
He, right now he's getting paid hourly. He's not on salary because he's an interim. The interim position, he was an assistant whenever the, uh, previous director stepped down. He became the interim because he was the assistant director at the time.
But he's collecting two salaries.
He's collecting one salary from the county. There's no law against having two jobs.
No, no. But I'm just saying.
He's only collecting one paycheck from the county at, on that side. And then he's an emergency management director as well.
And that covers separate counties, I know.
That covers, uh, that job only pays like six thousand dollars a year. Uh, but that's for when emergencies happen in our county to, uh, to help for the cleanup and calling in TMA. And he deals with the federal side of that thing and the state side for TMA and federal and things like that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Come on up.
My name is Denise Smith.
Denise Smith.
And I live here in this city. And I've been in this city forty seven years. I've been in this county all my life, which is sixty plus. I don't think it's right that we raise the taxes that much. I completely understand. They need to go up. We need to pay people. I'm not against anybody getting rates, but why do three dollars? That's a lot for taxes to go up. Okay, then my city taxes are going up. So I'm hit two ways. And then next year, when they come in and redo it all, they're going up again. So I'm hit three ways. I live on a fixed income. My husband and I both live on fixed income. It's hard, guys. It's hard. So I appreciate that y'all are both know it.
The county director just hit me in Texas and said they're going to stay and handle the outside. So if you get your billings sick or anything, let us know and we'll, we'll get you down to the land center for the heat. It's about ninety one degrees. The air's going a lot open.
My name is Ryan Wright. My family was blessed three years ago. I've become residents of Ronnie.
Ron.
Yeah. Residents of Overton County. Uh, we love the area and thank you folks for accepting us. I really appreciate all your hospitality. But has anybody been to the grocery store lately? Okay, folks are hurting. This is, this is not the time. It really isn't. So what do all these hardworking folks have to do? They have to look at their budgets and they have to spend the money accordingly. And that, that's where I think we are as far as the county as well at the moment. I don't mind if people raise. I think police officers are the most underpaid, unappreciated job you could possibly ever have. And I love you for it. I really do. Um, folks are hurting. They're hurting. Look, these hardworking folks, they work so hard all these years to have what they have. And with inflation and everything going on, it's, it's really hard to make ends meet without some rates like this. So I think you should look at it and, and see, uh, where all these people are. It's, it's not good right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
I want to say something real quick. My wife talked to her brother on the night on the telephone. It was last night. My wife's brother lives in Massachusetts, outside of Boston. You know how much, he lives in a little two story house and little bitty drive apart. Then I put one in his other car put out. You know how much a year he pays in property taxes? Eight thousand dollars a year. And he asked me, he said, how much do you pay for your property taxes? I said, I pay about a hundred forty, a hundred fifty dollars a year. And he laughed. I think some of these are so. But he said, but he told me, he said, cost of the time, but he said, imagine paying your eight thousand dollars a year in property taxes. That's a two story house. So costing a lot of money. So I'm not giving you that.
My name is Johnny Mann. I retired and moved up here a few years ago from Florida thinking that, well, I'll move up here. It'd be a bit less expensive to live. And, uh, my home that I have two acres and a twelve hundred square foot home in Florida and the taxes were five hundred dollars a year. So I bought me eleven acres and built a house on it. And now I'm looking at the taxes being almost two thousand a year. On top of groceries and everything else, uh, it's just crazy. I think we as a country need to have another Tea Party. And vote against all these extra taxes and stuff. I mean, every time we turn around, everything's going up. Not only they tripled my assessment this year, now y'all are going to raise the taxes on, on that assessment. And then next year is another year they're going to go up again. There's some point we have to say enough is enough. I mean, groceries, gas, everything. I'm looking, probably having to go back to work just to be able to eat and such, you know, so. I think all of us together, if you pay taxes, you need to say enough is enough. And I'm not, I'm not running for office for anything, but if I have to to get everybody fired up and stirred up, that's what we're going to do. We're going to have to do something and take our country back.
All right. Anybody else?
My name's David Hammond, right now. I just want to, are these all elected officials that are, and so you're supposed to be doing what the people want? And obviously the people can't do what they want. Why are we having this conversation? Some coward in here brought this up and they're too ashamed to say they're the ones brought it up. They know they're going to be back it up. So I mean, what are, what are we talking about? Thirty five percent? We all pay taxes. We, we, we do it. We do it every year. But thirty five percent, it's just ten cents.
What was your name, sir?
David Hammond.
Thank you. All right. There's no other questions. We need to move into our business. All right. Clerk Callrope, please.
And Abigail?
Here.
Roger Carr?
Here. Wait a second. Clerk Callrope.
Jess Bowman?
Here.
Geraldine Walker?
Here.
Philip Kelly?
Here.
Lee Richards?
Here.
Patrick McCurney?
Here.
Jeff Long?
Here.
Robbie Melton?
Here.
Shane Walker?
Here.
Donna Savage?
Here.
Cindy Robbins?
Here.
Yellow McCowen?
Here.
Darwin Clark?
Here.
Greg Nevin?
Here.
All fifteen. All fifteen, Brett. Do you have a question?
Here.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a question for that man there. Standing here listening to all this stuff about what they want to do. How much do you make a year?
How much do I make? Uh, I think it's this, this year it was assessed at ninety five thousand and some change.
How much?
Ninety five thousand and some change.
Ninety five thousand?
And that is not set by the county, sir. Elected officials in each county, their salaries are set by the state of Tennessee.
But you don't have to take that.
Mr. Clark, how much do you make?
All right. Randall Lowery, you got something? Go ahead. Come on down, Randall. Randall Ball's got something. Yes, sir.
They don't have to take the wages that the state recommends.
Okay.
They can take a cut in pay just like these people right here. They get a hundred dollars every time they meet.
More than that.
More than that. They don't have to take that. Now, if he gets over a hundred thousand a year from managing the state, the county, which he ain't nobody. So we need some cuts in pay.
You manage our county and you look at your, you look at what's going on over there in jail?
I ain't here to defend nobody. Would you take his sheriff job for his budget? You're asking him to take less. Would you take his job?
For what he's done?
Yeah.
I, I have a lot of respect for John, but he's failed us. And that's just God's law. It's true. When he's letting people fight, I know a man that he heard.
I'd say he'd be one of the few really.
He didn't do the background check on the man. Yeah, you, you know, Mr. Duke. I know the man's dad. He's one of the lawsuits that you had. And you shouldn't have heard him start with. You didn't do my grand checks.
The county attorney will explain how the state does this right away. So you, so you all will know for sure what acts works. This is Livian Sales. She's the county attorney.
I'm the county attorney. My name is Livian Sales. And the state of Tennessee sets the salaries for elected officials like the sheriffs, like the taxes, like Cesar. The, the, uh, register of date, the salaries for those people are set. The county does not, that doesn't come from county taxes.
They can pay less if they would.
That's today. Please, please, uh, enough to read, please.
I'm Randall Ball from the third district. I'd like to get, yes, you, as well, down to there are other two commissioners. I'd like to, for the PB team from Wilson Elementary to come forward.
Folks, these kids right here go to Wilson Elementary, which is everybody knows, the horse school in the county. They've been doing this PB team for two years. They leave next week to go to Arkansas for national practice. And that's Miss Alyssa Anderson, one of our four H leaders, which does a super job. And I've got a check here from the county on behalf of Mayor Barlow and all the committee commissioners to present to Ms. Anderson for the four H to use as she sees fit.
Uh, if y'all didn't know, there's still race officer Allen here. He was awarded school race officer, officer of the year for the state.
Thank you all. Wish you all the best of luck. We really do. And hope you have a good time. Bring back the trophy to Wilson for us, please. All right. Thank you all. Thank you. All right, number five, approve the minutes for May 28, twenty twenty four, county commission meeting. We need a motion by Robbie Melton. Got the second by Roger Carr. Any discussion? Any change?
I disapprove of that because that goes back to the health department. We've always been on the front. Is that one you're on?
Number five. Is there any, anything else?
Which one is?
All four? All four?
Ah.
All four most of you here. Who go to nothing? They go to, no, there. One up. All right, number six, approve the minutes for May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, special call, county commission meeting. Need a motion and a second. A motion by Jess Bowman?
I'll say it. Hang on, I got a second.
Take a second.
That's the meeting?
Randall? All right, go ahead, girl.
That's the meeting where we approved about that additional lane, right?
Yes. You like to pick up where I'm making it.
That is the meeting that was special called where we talked about buying the extra lane.
That's correct. That's correct.
So that's what we're voting on?
Well.
Yes.
Right. We're voting on the.
Or we're just voting on the minutes?
The minutes.
The minutes. We're voting on the minutes, but if you got anything you want to add to the minutes, take away from the minutes. You go ahead.
Can, can we rescind our vote on buying that additional lane this time?
You don't approve the minutes.
All right, wait just a second.
Do you hear what Brett said?
Well, if you don't approve the minutes, it doesn't pass.
If you don't approve the minutes, it don't pass.
Can we go ahead?
So just about no one made.
Whatever you want. Yeah. Go ahead, Brett. Go ahead.
Well, I had Miss Livian, folks, a check on the property. And she sent me a response from what is Attorney Jeff Miss for some seat tests. And my, my point was that I, I talked to a commissioner in Putnam County. And as far as surplus property, I, I, at first, what we. At first, what, what happened, from what I understand, I went here on the meeting that voted to pass, pass, pass the, uh, uh, the extra six acres. But from what I understand, uh, it's a federal grant. And you looked at the, the total on it, that does the grants on it, you've got a, uh... It went incorporated into the development plan, but only five acres, so they said they couldn't purchase anything except five acres. So then, and, and I'm not sure how it's, how, how, how we had it structured for the twelve, I'm not sure if that's a deal closer or not with this individual. It could possibly be, uh, but my, my, my concern is that we shouldn't be buying surplus property that we don't have a purpose for. If it's slotted for that, and, and, and I said the federal government blocks on it, we should block on it too. And it's commercial property. Now, there's a difference between commercial property and industrial building property. We can purchase industrial building property for, and it's future industrial wellness. And we can purchase, from what I understand, we can purchase commercial property. The attorney, he advised that for speculative purposes or, or, um, investment properties, we don't have that authority. However, well, my point is, that's, that's four hundred and forty-something thousand dollars that's gonna be ten extra pennies on the tax, tax. I probably won't, I'm probably gonna pay it before, guys. I'm gonna recommend that we... It'd be different at times, but we don't, we didn't have a purpose laid for it. We may have to go back. And, and the fact is, it may cost us more money to go find another piece of property somewhere else for the health department. But the health department's got, the health department's got, uh, a sixty million dollar grant, which we were one out of eleven counties that got that. You can, but you won't get the gold six point something million in, in refurbishment and old building. So you're turning, it's tax dollars, but you're turning back federal tax dollars that would be coming into the county for a brand new building. But, uh, but yeah, that's, that's a decision they need to make. That's, that's, that's where I'm at on, on that, on the motion.
You're doing great.
Yeah.
Well, Brett, everybody summed it up. Uh, what I wanted to say too, he summed it up, but that vote that was done on that property was done when several of us were out of town, and the county mayor knew we were out of town when he voted out. And I didn't think we got to spend it. We're asking the taxpayers for extra money now, and if we're gonna turn around and make that money buy property with? It's just, it's not a good idea.
So, voting no, then no, you got something on there?
No.
Now, if you vote no, then the minutes are not right by, and if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't pass, go back to, uh, the committee, uh, discuss again, reevaluate it. Right? If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the minutes. Vote no, for the debate. Right? Clerk, Colerole.
Greg Nivens?
Vote no.
Darwin Clark?
No.
Gil McCowen?
No.
Cindy Robbins?
No.
Donna Savage?
No.
Shane Walker?
No.
Robbie Melton?
No.
Jeff Long?
No.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
No.
Philip Tally?
No.
Geraldine Walker?
No.
Jesse Bowman?
No.
Roger Carr?
No.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Thirty-nine, no. Minutes failed. All right, number seven, consider approval for twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five technology grants up to twenty thousand dollars with a fifty percent local match approved by the vote. Need a motion and a second. Would anybody like to explain the, the technology grant? Steven, would you like to explain that?
This is a grant they do every year on the technology grant, if I'm not mistaken, am I correct? Uh, it's the technology grants twenty percent, or twenty thousand dollars, fifty percent local match. I'm sorry. I'm overheating right now.
For technology, for the county. For the library, it's the library. Technology support the library. Thank you, library. All right, need a motion and a second. Got a motion by Randall Boswell. Second by... Clerk Colerole.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Who made the motion, second? Motion by, uh, Randall Boswell, second by Cindy Walker. Thank you. Number eight, consider approval for the following quarterly school reports and school budget amendments. General Purpose Fund 141 Amendment Number Five, Six, Seven, and Eight. Federal Project Fund 142 Amendment Number Eight and Number Nine. Stateary Cabinet Fund 143 Amendment Number Two. Education Department Service Fund 156 Amendment Number One. So the education and the budget committee approved those amendments. That's just the end of the year school quarter report they submit each year. They have to amend where they had overruns or underruns, so we have to, we have to approve each year. Got a motion by Geraldine Walker. Second by Jeff Long. Clerk Colerole.
Greg Nivens? Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy? Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four motion carried. Number nine, consider approval for the following budget amendment, General Fund 101 Amendment Number Ten. General Fund 101 Amendment Number Eleven. Solid Waste Fund 116 Amendment Number Two. Highway Fund 131 Amendment Number Two, and Capital Projects Fund 178 Amendment Number Two. Of course, those are all accounting amendments for the end of the year. You know, we all actually project what we're gonna be before the end of June for our first new school year, and that's what these amendments are for. Need a motion. Got a motion by Donna Savage? Got a second, got a second by Cindy Robbins. Clerk Colerole, please.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
All four motion carried. Number ten, consider approval for salary schedules for twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five, approved by the Salary Budget Committee. Need a motion and a second. Now, this will be the salary schedule that takes the proportion in the year. Need a motion and a second. If there's no motion, then this will fail. If there's no motion, there's second.
What, what, what is it now?
It's the salary schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five, the whole county's salary schedule. Pardon?
Hey, can put, put the proposed cost of living in there?
I would think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Randall Boswell. Second by Jesse Bowman. Clerk Colerole.
Greg Nivens?
No, Randall.
Darwin Clark?
No.
Gil McCowen?
No.
Cindy Robbins?
No.
Donna Savage?
No.
Shane Walker?
No.
Robbie Melton?
No.
Jeff Long?
No.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
No.
Philip Tally?
No.
Geraldine Walker?
No.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Eleven, no, four, yes. Motion, quick. Consider approval for the Chamber of Commerce to use hotel motel funds in amounts of twenty-two, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars approved by the vote. Need a motion and a second. And those are tourism dollars, what they are. It's a grant match. Excuse me, thank you, Tom. Got a motion by Robbie Melton. Second by Donna Savage. Colerole, please, clerk.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yeah.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
All four. Motion carried. Pardon?
Well, did, did you say twenty-two thousand?
No, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm saying, do it again.
I was, I was just thinking...
Thank you for clarifying.
I had a twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Ran together. No, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Y'all run together every day. All right, number twelve, consider approval for the volume resolution and budget for twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five. Appropriations, appropriating the resolution number twenty-four dash oh-six-two-four dash oh-one. I assume we're running these all together, so, uh, a resolution fixing the tax levy is, uh, number twenty-two, twenty-four dash zero-two.
Is that the property tax, fixing the tax levy?
All, yes. That'll be the tax, yeah.
That's how tax levy is.
What's that?
Is that the tax, the property tax increases on the...
That will be in there, yes, that's correct. All right. That's number twenty, twenty-four dash zero-six, twenty-four dash two. Non-problem resolution number twenty, twenty-four dash zero-six-two-four dash three. Then we'll have General Fund 101, courthouse and jail mechanism 112, solid waste fund 116, drug fund 122, uh, American Rescue Plan Fund 127, highway fund 131, uh, General Department Service Fund 151, general purpose fund 141, uh, school federal project fund 142, central cafeteria fund 143, education department service fund 156, education capital project fund 177, uh, other capital project fund 178, uh, other capital project funds 179, uh, Overdue County Health and Rehab, uh, Overdue County and Big 911, and approved. This has been approved by the vote. Need a motion and a second.
I have a question. We can't, we can't go on, on this because since number ten we turned down because this budget has the, has the rating, we'll have to go back and revisit the, revisit this, revisit this budget, so...
Yep, the salary.
Since, since, because it's got the salary attached, since, uh...
Go on, yeah.
Number ten, that's high. Salary, we can't, we can't vote on the budget, so it's got the salary.
So what you're saying is you, this, you, what you're just talking about right there, that's about the property tax you're going for, right? And you're getting more of the property tax now, Alex?
Because they turned down the sal, they turned down the salary schedule.
Okay, so, in other words, in other words, we didn't make it back for nothing, so it's not what we're...
Oh, 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 thank you, sir. Uh, Livian, any discussion about that?
Well, I was gonna say, if the audience, if somebody wants to speak, I need to come up and introduce themselves and speak to the...
Permission, yeah. Thanks, all right. So...
And be interrupted for...
And we'll get that, wait just a second, sir. We'll get you up there and make your vote, like... The question being is that with, uh, Randall, and I, I agree with Randall, if they vote down, they voted down the salary schedule, then this is the portion of the budget that we're gonna be voting on, and that's a part of the budget, so...
I think you're gonna have to pass that.
Pass that, okay, so I thought, all right, we'll pass number two and send it back to the committee, okay? All right, number twelve, we'll pass and send it back to the vote. All right, number, number thirteen, uh, consider approval for county to pay up to six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents for health insurance per month effectively July through November twenty twenty-four, and up to six eighty health insurance per month effective December of twenty twenty-four through June twenty twenty-five for the county and the solid waste employees. No charges for the highway employees. Uh, county pays a hundred percent of individuals and eighty percent of the family, got approved by the Salary Budget Committee. We need a motion and a second. Got a motion by Roger Carr. Got a second by Randall Boswell. All right, Colerole, clerk.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker? Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
He didn't want to pass it.
Fourteen, four, and one pass. Motion carried. All four. Number fourteen, consider approval for highway bids number twenty, twenty-four and twenty, twenty-five for list attached, approved by the vote. Of course, this is worth the annual. The highway department bids out, it's RS2, gravel and all that each year, so, uh, that's, got a motion by Randall Boswell. And that's, you all have to write by, uh, got a second by Patrick McCurdy. Clerk, Colerole.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
All four motion carried. Number fifteen, consider approval for Jones Brothers to perform bridge work on Winkle Community Road, approved by the highway and budget. Now, Jones Brothers is gonna do the complete rebuild, tear down, rebuild, and wind up. Been built for seventy years. This is a, uh, ninety-eight percent grant that, that is due to high, high priority bridge program. And so the state will be paying ninety-eight percent of it. We have to fill up a two percent, which is, is probably hitting over about like fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, so... And that'll be paid out of the highway, out of the highway to be closed, so, uh, it'll be, I'm not sure when it's gonna start. We'll announce it in the paper when, uh, when we get ready to close it. That way everybody will know that the bridge is gonna be closing down, working, complete, uh, rebuild, tear down, rebuild, so... Uh, we need to approve Jones Brothers as the construction bidder who, who won the bid, so I need a motion and a second. Got a motion, a fifth, that is. Got a second by Randall Boswell. Clerk Colerole, please.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four motion carried. Number sixteen, consider approval for veteran service officers to go from part-time to full-time, approved by the Salary Benefit Committee.
I'll make your motion.
Got a motion, Brett. Got a motion, but Jesse Bowman? Second by Patrick McCurdy. Calderon, please.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Since we have got the budget, so we get. This is, this is, this will be increasing. If you're voting, if you're voting to pay for this right now, the extra two days in there.
We're gonna vote.
The veterans, there's nothing, veterans have been uh. They've been uh. They, they don't, they don't get no service from us.
They just, they just lose their memory from part-time to full-time.
We don't do nothing, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna end up voting no on this just because we uh. That's extra money we're gonna have to come up with right now too. I'll end up voting no for it right now.
We're looking at it better than you would be, except.
I got one.
One pass, one no, thirteen four.
You got one? Thirteen four, one no, and one pass. Motion carried to move her from part-time to her full-time status to help to the veterans. Alright, number seventeen, consider approval for the following outlets receive funding from the opioid settlement approved by the opioid committee. Uh, we got Hope Center Ministries at sixty thousand dollars. Uh, Celebrity Recovery twenty-one five forty. Housing Authority one seventy-five thousand. Uh, Court of Superior Special Advocate Kesa. Get Kesa, ten thousand. And is there any, uh, Donna, is there another one on here that uh?
The school is not on here, which uh.
The school?
We approved for them to get twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
How much?
Twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen.
We need a.
And, and I, I need to break this down because Cindy just asked him how come some got a lot more than others.
Explain that.
Our center ministries and celebrate recovery is not gonna take any type of funding that uh, the rest, the unrestricted, they wanted the unrestricted money, they're gonna face, face. Uh, the restricted money that, and that can use certain criteria for that, that's the reason why. Uh, some of our, and that's all they asked for, to be honest with you. Yeah, this is not taxpayer money, it's for the opioid enlightenment settlement, the opioid crisis.
Remember a few years ago, they, they stick pharmaceutical companies for the abuse of opioids, so this is what they say. We need to suspend the rules and add the schools to this here, so I need a motion.
That's my question.
Go ahead.
Is it suspend the rules, add the schools? I make a motion.
Now, a motion, Randall Boswell.
Add the schools?
Get the add the schools. In amount of twenty-three thousand, three, twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Three fifty. And Randall Boswell made a motion to suspend the rule. And add it to the agenda.
Mr. Park, not speaking, please.
Nobody, uh, Chester, all the talk at ease, that'll go.
I've had a rough day, I won't go home. I mean, I've been going two hundred miles, getting work.
Ah, sure, come on, settle in the right place.
First of all, we apologize to this lady right here for speaking out behind the back right here. Okay? So what you're telling us is, we're not gonna vote on our land taxes. I call it one minute, then, but it failed, right? And that was the salary, right?
Correct.
So you're not gonna vote on this? When will this vote come up?
Go back up once they go back to the budget committee and it'll have to be announced all over. So it'll be done when it's up.
When?
Just borrow like that, that's it.
When's, when's the meeting?
And say. We'll go back to the budget.
He makes the funny jokes, right? Don't have to look at us. I'm not hiding, okay? I'm being very respectful. I've, I've got a job to do too, but let me explain it just a little bit, okay? And I, I apologize, I, I understand that all of you here don't feel the same way as all the other ones here. I know, but that's fine, that's fine. We have our right to all things. But this is the way the budget committee works. If it fails here, it has to go back again and be revisited. Then it has to go back in front of the whole commission again and be approved. Then it has to be ran in the paper for ten days before it can be brought back to court. This is not my rules, this is the state of Tennessee. We have until the end of August to get this passed. If we do not, the state will step in and do it for us. When the state steps in and does this, they will say it the way they see it, not us. And it could be a catastrophe. Your taxes could be four dollars instead of two eight.
Uh, two sixty-eight. Sixty-seven point, or two point six seven.
It's impossible.
Thank you for your time.
I've got one more thing to say to these people with the fence. I've been, I've been beating them up, and look here. Your average, your average apartment, one bedroom apartment in Nashville, Tennessee is like fourteen hundred dollars a month. Okay? It's not that high here. If the state has, if the state steps in, they gonna look at the whole state. And that's where they'll, that's where they'll pull it from.
You're exactly right.
I pull it.
Now, listen everybody, we, at the end of the, of the meeting, we'll let you all speak again, okay? Alright, so let us get through the meeting first, and you all can have another time to stand, okay? You gonna, alright, but all, make sure everybody gets opportunity to speak again, alright? Now, I've got a motion to suspend the rules, Randall Boswell, to add the schools back to the, I need a second. Suspend the rules. Got a second by Patrick McCurdy. All four, all four to suspend the rules.
I can't hear nothing.
I'm sorry.
All the way down, because I can't hear.
Y'all give us, let us through the business and then we'll let y'all talk, okay? Alright, a motion by Randall Boswell to suspend the rules and add the schools to the abatement settlement payout. We got a second by Patrick McCurdy. Now we need all four to suspend the rules. All four. All for motion carried, so we added the schools back to the abatement, portion of the opioid settlement. Now I need a motion to approve the following programs. Got a motion by Robbie Melton, got a second by Donna Savage. Thirty-two dollars, please. Yes, if you want to say it, and this is Robbie Melton, I have a motion, I have a second by Donna Savage.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. Alright, number eighteen, consider approval to award twenty-four, twenty-five jail and senior center, senior center food and non-food bids to industrial wholesale company IWC, been approved by the budget committee. That was bid out and then this thing bid, and IWC got a motion by Jeff Long. Got a second, got a second by Greg Nivens. Clerk Calderon, please.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Did we have to get the, break down a little across in the picture of the vision there?
There no?
You say no, okay? No. I'm not saying that, that we don't need those.
Donna Savage? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm not saying we don't need to provide food for Donna Savage's partner. I'd just like to know if none of them are not.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Fourteen four, and one no. Alright, number nineteen, consider approval for physical strength, the district government's physical confirmation letter for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's a three, three-star program, and it's a requirement, and it's been approved by the budget committee. That's a grant that we get every year to help with uh, applying for different types of programs in the state, so. Got a motion by Geraldine Walker. Second by Donna, by Philip Tally. Clerk Calderon.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four, motion carried. Alright, number twenty, consider approval, re- resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero six two four dash oh four to appoint and reappoint of the judicial commissioners, and that's been approved by the public safety committee. As you all know, there, the third one goes out tonight to write the law, and we, all we're doing is reappointing them next year. Got a motion by Robbie Melton?
Got a second.
Got a second by Randall Boswell. All four? Those opposed?
No.
We got one, one pass. Motion carried. Alright, number twenty-one, acknowledge audit committee minutes from January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Audit Chair Donna Savage discussed these items with the commission. So, and that's just an update, if anybody have any question about those audit meetings, then. Well, they're, they're available, anything available, it's all up to.
It's been asked for.
You just have to go to the, uh, county's ex office to, to ask for any public.
They have been, they've been asked, but they haven't yet.
Honey, I don't hope like that.
The last time it was, was May twenty-third.
Alright, number twenty-two, consider approval for notaries at large. Eric, there was no vote on here.
No votes, don't tell.
No, just if there's any question. Number twenty-two, consider approval for notaries at large, Erica Miller, who's new. Kenneth Dodson, second, renewal. Nicole Cooper, renewal, and Taylor Parrish, new. Got a motion, got a motion by Philip Tally. Got a second by Roger Carr. All four?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Alright, number twenty-three, Ms. Cantrell, you have anything this afternoon? For the, for the committee?
No, I'm not, I'm not today, work Thursday, I'll pitch it next time.
Hold on, guys, hold on, just a minute. Right, right now, uh. If I heard everybody right, you guys would like to have a sales tax increase, right?
Yes.
No.
I remember, I, you'll get a chance to vote for it, because I'm gonna go ahead and propose that we put that on the referendum, we got all the votes for it again. And it'll go from nine-five to nine-seven-five.
Yes.
They're trying to fix everything. Hold on, hold on, guys, this is a good start, hold on, guys. Let, let me talk, I, I know the temperatures are high, and it's hot, and Oregon's hot, but higher, higher the temperature is. But, uh. Yeah, plus your team's fixing play. But anyway, I, I wanna make, I wanna suspend the rules, and then, I, I wanna make a motion, and, and we'll put that back on. It failed, it failed uh, five years ago?
No.
Two, three years ago?
Is it just two, three years ago? But, 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 that's, the sales tax is probably the most fair tax you got. Everybody, everybody comes in, people from tourism comes in here from the state, that's the most fair tax that we've got. Uh, property tax? That's not a fair tax.
No. No.
Income tax, income tax is not a fair tax. User fee, user tax, I, I can choose on a sales tax, I can choose to go out here and eat steak and shrimp, or I can choose to go out here and buy a cornbread and bread. Uh, things and cornbread and anything, you can, you can, you can pick that. But, we're, we'll be getting that in from everybody. And it's, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go ahead for this, and I want to address this here in a few minutes about some other issues that it's kind, before we give the general public, and so we get out here and, and get to watch, see if your team wins. Uh, alright. Anyway, I'm gonna make a motion, so. Now, can we do, can, can we do that, add that to, suspend the rules and add there that Greg's proposing to do a, propose a sales grant?[1511.42]
Yeah, they might have to come back and rely upon a resolution.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll prepare that.
So, so do we need to do it that way, suspend that? Okay. We have a motion, very big a motion to suspend the rules to add sales tax. Got a second by Donna Savage.
All four?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. No, it will be a fall. It will be in November, it'll be the next election.
Let me get this focused on smooth, and it's kinda missed.
This guy, he, he's digging the league, aren't you? Or you're digging life?
Yeah. That's what I, can we put him in charge of this committee here? I mean, that's, that's what you gotta do to come up, that's what I wanted to say earlier. Now that it is held off, do not come up with a better idea than just trying to take an easy lazy way out. Let's fix a lot of problems with just taxing the landowners. There's a lot more people in this county that ain't landowners. And so, per isn't? Thirty percent. Thirty percent of our property owners, right? So, so you're gonna put it all on our, all on our backs? It's just lazy. You got, you got all this time to figure this out now, which ain't a lot of time. But, let's come up with other, just like that idea, just come up just like that. And just have that.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the, uh, uh, wheel tax sticker, everybody has hit me up about the wheel tax sticker with the school. I'd like to see it go on a referendum, and, and, and the people vote on that, and that way that money's there marked for
Let's put it up.
For the, uh, the, again, it takes two years to pass too, and it'll be on this ballot, it could be on the twenty-twenty-six ballot.
There's no way to fast track. See, that's something, that, that's not our fault, that's something you guys should have done two years ago.
We did.
Well, it ain't about her now, now that we know what we're in for, I think you'll get a few more votes. But I mean, come up with some solution, you got time.
All right, Greg, just finish up, you got two more.
Okay. Folks, listen to me for a second. You guys have brought up a lot of, a lot of good stuff, sales tax, thirty-three, it's a three percent increase, I'm not sure if that's where it is, but if it is, it's high, I, I've got, my property, my property, I, I live in an old farmhouse, about forty-eight, forty-something acres. It's an old house, I don't pay a lot of taxes on it, I done an assessment on my property, I paid, if it went through the two-point-six-seven, it'd be about a hundred dollar increase. Um, I had, I done a buddy of mine, his was, his was, he's built one close to six-hundred thousand, five-hundred-some-twenty-five thousand. From this year to next year, that property would increase about four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And he, and he blames about it, and, and that's a lot of money, but you're talking about a half-million-dollar piece of property too, I said, I've watched you sit there and spend four-hundred dollars on ammunition at, at Academy Sports.
Sir, what would your thought if you were to do a small today?
Yeah, I'm not talking about, that's what I'm assessing.
I understand that, but if you were reassessed like your friend, with a half-million-dollar property, what would your property be worth?
I have no idea.
It would probably be worth a hell of a lot more than a half-million dollars.
I've got, I got a two-hole out of house.
But I, I, I understand.
We need for, we need to vote on your
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Not voting.
You don't wanna sell it, right?
Yeah, I know, I know.
All right, we got a motion, we got it approved, suspend the rules and add, uh, sales tax to the next, uh, official ballot of the next election. Official election, but, all right. Yes, yes to go ahead, no, no to not do it, so clerk called over.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker?
It's going from nine-point-two-five to nine-point-five, so.
Nine-five. High five.
Nine-seven-five?
Yeah, it'll be the same as Coach.
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Lee Richards?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
I had a question, the point-two-five, is that all gonna come to the county, or does some of that go to the state? Airborne City. Get all those to school.
Everybody'll get their piece of the pie.
City will get part of it, it's wherever, it's wherever the sales go. If you sell it in town, it goes to cities, uh, if you sell outside the county in the dollar stores, we get that. So, I think it's a, one of the worries, but it sounds like it's not gonna, it's not gonna cover, uh No.
And city tax already there. And already that way in the city.
So, and that's, and that's what, that's what people are saying, is there, there are certain laws in place restrictions that even if there is money, we cannot allocate it for the I'll go, yes.
Matt, yes, yes or no?
I said yes.
Okay.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton? Shane Walker? Donna Savage?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McCowen? Connor Clark?
Yes.
Greg Gibbons?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. So there'll be a, we'll work toward, we'll get the county attorney to craft a resolution for the next, uh, uh, election, that we have large election, we have it calculated. All right, now we're at the end of the, I mean, you got anything else, uh, Lee's got something, then Greg, I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me correct.
Go ahead, Lee.
I'd like to address, uh, both, thank you for coming in here, voice your opinions. Uh, I've heard a lot of comments, we're gonna get voted in, well, if you decide not to vote in, that's, that's your problem. So, but, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. But, but you need, you need to come to the meetings, you all wanna come and complain at the very end of it, when we've already settled everything, those county meetings go on all the time. You all need to come to them and listen to what's going on, and voice your opinion, so we can vote better. That's what we want you to do, we want you to come, we want you to voice your, because you all put us in these positions.
We'll come when they fix the air conditioning. We don't have the money.
Well, not all of that.
Let him finish, hey!
Hey.
Let him finish. If you wanna address the addresses, you need to step up here. Step, I'll step up there. It's not your turn.
Wait, just wait, let me finish, Lee. Line up right there.
So, I, I don't give a fuck, I don't give a shit at all. I pay point-two-hundred, so, I don't wanna pay. The city's going up, you know, but we got to do something for the sheriff's department and the EMS. So we have to hold some kind of resolution to get them more money. John, how many deputies are there down, about six?
Six patrolmen, and as of today, I couldn't tell you how many.
Let me ask you, when somebody's kicking in your door, and you call the sheriff's department and say, come get me, come help me, I can't. I only got two deputies on duty, and they're on other calls, it'll be an hour. Or your mother's laying there, please let me finish, let me finish. Or your mother's laying there, and she needs an ambulance, and the ambulances can't get to you because they don't have help. We're training these people to go to other counties, they don't need to be doing that. We need to get this pay comfortable, you have better pay, you attract better people, you have better people here, then it's a win-win for everybody. Everybody say the same thing? So we've got to be getting somebody to help. So the only, the only way that we proposed to do that was to hike the taxes up, I don't wanna hike the taxes.
What, thirty-five percent?
No, I, I don't wanna go thirty-five percent at all, I don't, okay? So, the taxes in twenty-twenty were two-point-two-five, were they not, Johnny? During COVID, just before COVID, they were two-point-two-five? And we dropped it down to one-point-nine, okay? So if we went back to that, everybody, we said, what we were paying prior? Would, would that be okay?
You can't do it without knowing the numbers, what we need.
Well, yes, I know that, but I'm just trying to get some kind of resolution here to make everybody happy. Need to get our sheriff's department, what he does, it's a tough job, I've been through that, I went to the police academy, spent ten years doing that. It's a tough job, he's got a tough job on his shoulders, whether you think so or not, it's easy to say, well, you know what, but the state does set its salary. And I, I'd hate to be in your shoes right now, he gets a hundred phone calls a day, at the very least.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to address the commission and the group, line up right here and vote in. We'll be taking most people that line up, vote in.
But thank y'all, let's
Robbie, Robbie.
Stay there, it's okay.
Go ahead, sir, state your name, state your cell. Hey, we're sorry. Thanks, sir.
I've got a problem. We've got taverns, basically, that's what I'm talking about, they run them around, they shouldn't be, about teens, they shouldn't be running. We need more training in jail, the officers in jail, sure, they probably need more money, but they also need training on what they do. They knew what to do, and this wasn't a happenstance, it was the way I looked at it.
We watched that video.
I'm talking.
We watched that video, and we didn't see no negligence, but it wasn't our decision, it was a state's decision.
It's not the state's decision, we
It was a fortunate decision to take the decision. We live in an unfortunate society, where everybody's too happy. The state, the fortunate decision.
Society where nobody will turn out this year, only burn us all over again. I have to wait like this for years. I just wanna know something, what, what's your name?
Lee Richards.
Lee Richards, I guarantee you, you're gonna be elected next time.
That's okay, six-point-five.
I guarantee this man right through.
I'm in the city, first day. You can bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
What is your name? By Del Rebels? I'm in his district. Um, I feel that we shouldn't have a raise on the, on the officers, because aren't we gonna eventually pay that? In the million-dollar lawsuit, all of us are gonna be paying the million dollars for losing that person in jail, so why do we have to pay them more? When we are already taking on their debt, that debt that we didn't vote on, pay that one million dollars? Whatever it was that, that we have to deal with, uh, walk over there. One-point-three.
I guess my question is, why don't we figure out how much we owe on this wheel tax sticker? Does anybody know?
You made that claim on the wheel tax sticker?
Does anybody know what the amount is?
Chris, or is it thirteen? Chris, what is it? Fourteen? Fourteen.
Fourteen million? So how did that go from four million high school to fourteen million?
It's a builder program, we, we either borrow the money and, uh, do it that way, and you pay for, for the property tax, or you pay through, through, through a wheel tax, it goes to the builder program. We didn't, we, none of us in nineteen-seventy-six voted to put the wheel tax on. My dad's, my dad said in seventy-six, he said, first of all, he said, we built that school over there in a swamp, and he said that wheel tax, he had lived for it, and told Liv, he said that wheel tax will never come off.
That's right.
And he's, he's, he's right, but at, at the time, I hadn't been on the county commission. Since, what we have to do with the schools, and it's by state law, folks, we have to maintain a maintenance of effort. That maintenance of effort includes the wheel tax that goes for the building programs, so if we do not pay for that through the wheel tax, you pay, you're gonna have to be paid through, through the property tax, that's just how it is.
Basically, counties have that same wheel tax?
Yeah, all through the state, all through the state has to follow the same
And we, we will never get rid of that, pay that longer on.
You'll never, will, when you get a wheel tax on, you'll never get rid of a wheel tax unless, unless they whip, whip it to the property tax.
You don't know how much money's coming in from that wheel tax, is it all that money?
Can you tell us, Chris?
I can do it.
How much property tax? Seven-hundred thousand a year for McConville.
A year?
Go for that one.
Multiply that times four days.
Yeah, I know, but you hear what I'm saying?
Um, I'm just saying, that's over sixty-two million.
But you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I understand what you're saying, I don't think it's wrong.
That's what we did. That was done right.
All right, folks, we got
My name is Thank you, appreciate it, my name's Matthew Cudd. Of course, many of you all know I'm the chairman of the Republican Party here, I'm also with the District Attorney's Office, of course, I'm not speaking for my office in any way, this kinda gives you a little perspective from where my mind is as we look at this issue. As for the statements about our law enforcement officers, I've worked with law enforcement officers in multiple counties, this is a small county district. In Open County, it's less than the quality of law enforcement that we get for the amount that we pay them. There isn't a single municipality or county around us that pays less than what we, it's just a fact. And our law enforcement goes above and beyond in what they do and the resources that they're given. Now, I, I mentioned my political affiliation just to go to the point of this principle of fiscal responsibility. We have to be smart about how we approach these fiscal issues, and just allowing something to go untouched because it's politically expedient is not the route to go. We have a problem, we need a solution. Now, the solution may not be support our property tax increase, I understand how some would have issues with that. But we're gonna get a referendum on sales tax, that's a good, there's a conversation about bringing our, our property tax back up to the previous levels. Fact of the matter is, we have a number which we have to meet, it's not pleasant, but we have to meet that number, so now we have to get to that dollar amount. And, fact of the matter is, Overton County, I believe, if my statistics, uh, serve me right, is the fifth lowest tax county in the state. That's a good thing, but not when you're running a massive deficit and have massive issues meeting the obligations of the county.
How long do we have to pay that one-point-three million dollars, eight years?
And for that, I can tell you, not as a civil attorney, but as someone who went through law school, there are many, many, many reasons on how that could have went the way that it went. I watched the video too, like Mr. Richards, I didn't see it, I didn't see it, but the courts see things how they wish, but I'm, I'm telling you from what I observed in that, the fact, no charges came from that to tell you what you need to know as far as the gall was up. Personally, Matthew Cudd speaks, not anyone, thank you. So anyways, guys, uh, Chris, you all, eh, you guys were trying to find a solution. The solution that you had isn't gonna work, but you need the involvement of the entire community to come up with a solution that will work, rather than us complaining, I hope you'll see this as part of what Trump's gonna try to solve as well. I, I fully appreciate what y'all are trying to do, um, I agree that we need to have increased wages, we need financial, uh, fiscal responsibility. But having a, a huge draconian tax thrown at us at one time is not the way to do it. If you wanted, uh, to split it up, maybe a little bit of, of, uh, of, uh, sales tax, maybe a little bit of tax on people renting houseboats and, and and renting out rental properties on, uh, you know, on, uh, on the lake. Maybe a little bit of several different things. You know, I didn't hear anybody saying, exactly how much revenue do we need to make? You know, I mean, they say thirty-five percent tax, I mean, forever, I mean, what, what is that? We need to know, what do we need, okay, what do we have to have to, to reach our needs? And then fashion maybe a group of taxes to, to meet those needs, maybe we need to do one percent every other year to let people get used to it, instead of sitting here wanting to throw a thirty-five percent tax on all at once. But whatever the solution is, it, it, it can't be some, we already pay a pretty, pretty darn high, uh, sales tax. And just saying, you know, oh, let's throw another quarter percent on, or whatever, I mean, how much does that generate, and how much do we need to generate? We should be doing more than we need to achieve our goals. And if we need six new officers, that, that may be fine, if, if that's what we really need. But it, but the taxes should be tailored to meet the goal, and they just, we don't need just the one thing fits all. And, uh, that's all I have to say on the issue, I hope you guys think a little bit out of the box, instead of just a one thing or the other, you know, maybe a little bit of several things. Thank you.
I'm Hannah Ramon, I'll tell you back up here, but I'm still talking about wheel tax sticker, here I go again. I have no kids, I have no grandkids, why should I be paying for a school that I don't get no use out of? But I don't, I, I pay it every year, I buy two of them, but I talked to one of the county commissioners, and they, I said, why don't we think of zoning these schools, instead of adding on to the schools, and make these kids go to the school in their district that they're supposed to go to? Because, uh, none of them run here, might be playing basketball or football, I mean, you know, and that would be a way to save money instead of building on to a school just because them kids will fill that. Keep harder in Putman County, Putman County zoners their schools, you go to school in the, in the district that you live in, so you don't go. And that's the way it needs to be here, and then we won't be adding on to this school or that school. Take where the school's from.
That's a school board, they, they make that decision, it has nothing to do with county.
So.
The school board will get rid of that.
Yeah.
But it's a good board, kind of a board.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, like, how much money it would save us? Because they, they don't make a living playing basketball or football, you know? But no, I don't have no kids, I don't have no grandkids, you all are discriminating against people like me. I hate that, I hate that. Thank you for coming.
My name's Elliot Bowman, First District. How many of us here think that the federal government is ran in a, in a, in a good manner? Anybody agree with that? What's, what's their solution every time there's a deficit? Raise taxes, right? Well, a bunch of folks, a bunch of folks in here were that quick to think, oh, well, let's not do the land tax, let's raise our sales tax. Is that gonna solve a problem?
No.
We don't know exactly how much we're in debt, right? We don't know how long the increase is gonna last. But keep in mind, anytime you think, oh, well, let's do this tax instead of that tax, how many more people do we have in this town than we used to have? It's always increasing, right, generally? Cost of goods is always increasing. A percentage-based tax should never go up, because it goes up naturally every year. If, uh, TV costs five-hundred dollars last year, and it costs seven-hundred this year, that's gonna increase in the revenue from that sale, okay? Multiply that by every single sale out there, rent income, land taxes, because property tax, the property values are going up, right? Percentage-based taxes should not go up, the only real answer to a solution, or the only solution is, is to do without. We, we tell our, we yell it at our TVs, every time we look at the news and see the government in some mess, they need to do without all these programs, okay? You can't just keep increasing taxes, folks, you gotta do without.
Yeah, I say a little something there, we've only had a tax increase in over nine years.
As it should be.
Paying taxes.
That's good.
So I'm just placing, no, now can we not raise any taxes? What kind of taxes? I mean, property value. Well, I'm telling you, it needs to affect everybody in this county. It needs to affect everybody in this county, not just the landowners. Cause we've got sorry people out there that won't work, they're bumming off the county, they're bumming off their family, but they wouldn't get a lick of a snake. And they go and they do dope, they sell dope, they do all this stuff. And they need to be paying too.
How do we extract the money out?
Well, they buy food, they buy drinks, they buy clothes.
They're taxed on the dope.
Well, John, we know and I know you're not from Tennessee, cause you ain't fingered that long.
You know, you know, ma'am, I, I'm not originally from here?
No.
But how old are you, you've had all these years?
I've been here all my life, I'm sixty-eight years old, and I've been my buck from you, I didn't buck until you started. You're a guest.
Ms. Lois, let, let me explain on this. Property tax, and we, our, our, our budget that we went through, it's not elaborate, we could, we're, it's a bear of bones from what we've done year to year to year. Each, each office, we went Each, each office, we went through, we went through each office. The only thing that we've increased anything on any office is something that's needed. I think like Farrah Boone needed five thousand dollars for an M G I S program that she has to have, few computers. And, we're not being able to retain our employees. We're losing. We're, we're losing EMS to people like Wilson County that pay seventy-five thousand dollars a year for EMS. The sheriff's department's deputies can walk clean across, or walk across the road over there to the city. They'll make three more dollars an hour than what we're paying right now. And then, but, but we went through, we, we have went through the budget. There, there's no, there's no fluff at all. And I've done, folks, I've done this for twenty-four years. I've never voted on an increased tax except once. Except once hourly, I, we'll have, there's no choice on this. And we're gonna have to have a tax increase by at least thirty-three cents to make up for that one point three million dollars. Now, you might as well just stick that in your pipe and smoke it. You, you want the services? It's the same thing as we got sued at the nursing home.
Well, it's the same people, it's the people that give us, are they still employed at their posts?
They didn't do anything wrong.
I watched that, I watched that.
If you've not looked through it. Let me finish, guys. Let me finish on this. Sheriff's Department, I'll take up for the Sheriff's Department. City called them, there was a, there was a guy out here that was mentally inept that they took him, they took him to the hospital. The hospital tried to get him into muckus ban. They were two weeks out, if I'm not right. They were two weeks out. So they had no place else to take him, keep him from hurting himself or somebody else doing dangerous self. So they put him in the sheriff's department. They held him, he was in there trying to peel his eyeball out, if I'm not mistaken. And so they tried to restrain him and what happened after that? We're not sure, he asphyxiated, whether that was because of something he was on or... I, I can't blame it on the deputies, they were trying, they were actually doing their job. They were, they, there was no, there was no ill intent.
Well, so we don't know what happened to him.
But we, but, but guys.
He did not.
We all get cocked, man. Hold on.
But anyway, guys, let, let's not get off on a tangent. I, I, I do a dumb tangent myself. But anyway, what happens, we're in, we're in the period of George Floyd. The police, the police departments and the police are being scrutinized. We're lucky we get anybody who wants to put in for law enforcement. You have to give these guys a hand back here that want to sit here day in, day out and put their life on the hands going out here every day in the domestic disputes. I mean, really, folks.
Same as the E M Ts.
Same as the E M Ts.
That's right, they all get farmed on time.
But, the fact is, we wouldn't have a raise if it wasn't for that unfortunate incident. You've got attorneys out here that look, they're, they're like... Don't even, don't even slam your hat, but anyway, you, you've got people that, that are out there like land sharks. So they see something like that and they, they swim it in the water to come, to come and get lawsuits at the counties. They seen this coming. We couldn't. If, if we'd have ended up not taking the recommendations that our attorney told us to take. We had to take the recommendations. It, it, it hurt me, I, it grated, grated me something else.
Who's attorney? Who's attorney?
It's the insurance. Robin Williams. But anyway. Let's not, let's not go off. But anyway, that's, 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 that's the responsibility that we assume when we got, we, we're gonna have the same, you're gonna have the same liability over here with, with a county-owned, uh, nursing homes. You've got the same liability that something happens here, but if an EMS, we don't have enough personnel, EMS to get there in a certain time and your, your parent dies and they decide to sue you because your, your response time is slow. We're, and we're already, we want the, the, and, and I, and it's like I told a buddy of mine, I said, we're all willing to sit here and want the services, but we're not willing to pay for them? We have no choice, folks. We have no choice except that. We are, that's us. And I'm sorry, but we, the county does not have a rainy fund. You guys, you guys have, you guys have a rain, you guys and us, we're the rainy day fund. They should've stayed in the hospital, but they wouldn't, but they wouldn't take it. But anyway, I'm trying to take up for, and, and Stephen Barlow's took a beating. I mean, he's been beaten to death tonight, and he's, I, this makes the fifth county executive I've been through. Our budgets haven't looked hardly any different than what we've been set up with right here. I'm, that is, that's beside the point. But anyway, folks, that's, that's a voice, that's about all I've got on this. I, I, I hate it, it's not palatable, I don't like it. You look at it, it's a plan.
Alright, alright, folks, let's, let's drive, it's getting worse in here, so let's drive. A lot of people got a few more questions.
I'm through, ma'am.
Just let, let somebody finish speaking. Lo, are you done, Ms. Lois?
I just want everybody that's an adult in this county to have to pay.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Hi, I understand. Jeremiah Lake, uh, guys, I would like to land on property, I want to recommend to land, uh, some commercial property, some rental property. I understand y'all like to push back the budget maybe on the property taxes. I can stand here and say you're just like any other rental, anybody owns rental business, it's commercial property. You're not taxing me. I'm gonna write the check. What am I gonna do? I'm gonna pass it on. So the individual's here that's on a fixed income, I've got multiple, what are they gonna do? What are we gonna do for the homeless? How does come? Next, as you said, put it in your pipe and smoke it, right? That's what made me get up here. We've got fifteen commissioners and a county executive. How long are we gonna smoke that pipe? One point three million dollars is what we're here for now, right? Next year, are y'all gonna make the motion to drop it back down? I've got one, one comment. You, you sat back here in the back row when somebody spoke and mumbled the entire time. Yes, sir. You have been extremely disrespectful to ninety percent of the people who go up. You sat here and mumbled just about everything anybody had to say. Okay, I'll sit here and I'll watch you, but that's your opinion. Are you gonna vote to drop it?
I wasn't gonna vote for it anyway. I've never, in fourteen years I've been a county commissioner, I made a promise that I would never vote for a property tax increase or a pay a houndman for myself. And I wasn't gonna break that streak tonight. I had never voted for a property tax increase, so that's the rest of my age.
When it went across the budget in the last meeting, did you vote for it?
The most media.
Was you a part of the meeting?
No.
Who was?
That's all I was wondering. I didn't know if you were going to, you're not. But my last thing I'm gonna say. The last thing I'm gonna say, like I said, it's gonna be passed on. I can, I can do one of two things. I've got storage buildings. I've got storage buildings in over a county, space commercial. You done your assessment, mine's going up approximately fourteen hundred dollars. I'm gonna pass that on to the general public, or I'm gonna do one of two things. I'm gonna close that business. It's become my personal building. You're not gonna get the property revenue that you was getting. I'm gonna go to a different county and I'm gonna build storage buildings. So here we are. You've got your thoughts about that. There's more ways around beating the dead horse. Three or four months ago, there was a liquor tax on Old Gray, right? Everyone in his mother gets it.
Uh, no.
Toothpick, well, you're right, I'm sorry, you're right, you did. I agree with that. You're begging for tax money. I get it. I don't drink. I would agree with it. But everybody sitting here knows somebody that doesn't. Do you think they'll not be able to get it, that establishment is gonna keep them from being able to get it on the way, bring it with them? And if anybody's been to Old Gray and anybody knows Chris Landers, it's gonna work. The man makes stuff work, it's gonna grow, it's gonna be big. There's tax revenue that can come from that. Why, why are we so opposed? I get it, I agree, it's a bottom bell. I don't agree with the drinking, I don't drink, but it happens. It's two thousand twenty-four. Y'all wanna come up to the, to the level on that, we're gonna have to get out of those thoughts. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Alright. Can I say one thing? Every meeting I go to, I tell you this. Everybody knows where I live, I live in the old feed store, I had the coffee shop there, and I always tell people, please come see me. I have iced tea, I've got coffee. Come, talk to me.
Where you charged?
And I will, I will be glad to explain why I vote the way I do. What county commission can and cannot do. I think that's the biggest, uh, problem here is you don't realize how, how our hands are tied when it comes to making a lot of decisions. All these people, listen, we, we picture these places, nobody wants to raise your taxes. And I certainly, nobody here wants their taxes raised neither. Just a minute, just a minute. Let me finish. These are fine people here. Nobody's selling out, everybody's doing the best they can, supporting, but cut talk to them. It's kinda late on the last day, calling me at nine thirty, and I was wondering if I'm, I'm really gonna listen and be happy when you call nine thirty my home that Sunday night. I'm, I'm available any day, every day to come see me. Come see these people. These are fine people that have not sold out, and they're doing the best they can, and we're doing the best we can to, to run the county where we can and to see exactly.
Alright, our next meeting will be Monday, July eighth, forty-three, forty-five P M here, at the court out. I wanna thank everybody that's been here tonight. You gonna have a ready vote on that? Ham's right off. No, 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 man. Hold on a second. We got one more on the bid, folks, I have it.
Pardon? We have three microphones, why are we not using them?
I don't know, I don't know why they're not on.
Nothing worked in here.
It's alright, I didn't know. Number twenty-six. Alright, number twenty-six on, on the agenda here, add this to the all agenda, just motions to add the amiss write-off. Y'all see that on here? Make a motion by Randall, suspend the rules and ask the amiss write-offs to the agenda. Oh, oh, we need to finish some business.
We're still going through the business meeting, please.
Just give us, give us, let's finish the business and then we'll, we'll chat. Alright, final motion to suspend the rules and add the amiss write-offs to the agenda. We'll have a second, we got a second to type it, curate it. Alright? Alright, all four?
Aye.
All four, motion carried, add to the agenda. Alright, now, need a motion to approve the write-off. Got a motion by Randall Boswell. Sorry, hold please. To, to, for the write-off, a motion to approve the write-off of the agenda. It's an annual thing we do, it's an annual thing we do each year, just for those who can't pay. Got a motion by, Randall Boswell, got a second, by Roger Carr. Got it, huh? All four?
Aye.
Need a vote. Motion carried. What we gonna do, I don't, does, alright, we'll back up, go roll call. Just that voice call, all, all the, the rules here. Will you please call?
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Bud Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Tony Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Lee Richards.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
She's, she hasn't leave.
Oh, so I went up to her rooms. Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Kell McCowen.
Yes.
Donald Clark.
Yes.
Greg Nimmer.
Yes.
Alright, all motions carried, so one pass and all four. Alright, the next meeting will be July eighth at five o'clock here in the boardroom. I'll undertake a motion to adjourn, got a motion by Jeff Long, got a second by Philip Tally. All four?
Aye.
It'll be our turn. Thank you all for coming. We'll be around for the call before we roll. Thank you all very much.